President.
Barton.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Hingleton.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Addition of any items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Three point two minutes of the January 8th regular meeting and the January 12th, 17th, and 23rd special meetings. Approval of the finance report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, and approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and to declare any items of surplus. Got two minutes.
Okay, I did not see any errors with our regular meeting minutes for our special meetings. If you look at agenda item 3.3, I've got two attachments there, actually a couple of different attachments. We'll start with the investments. Want to thank Ms. Hughes at the Woods County office. She's done an outstanding job of providing some notations for us this month. She's got some really great interest rates from our local banks, and so we are very appreciative of that with those investments. So they are all current and up to date. We've got a few that will be maturing soon, and she will be working locally first to try to get some good interest rates for our investments. If you look at the second attachment, that is our monthly chargeable report. So you can see we are still behind in our gross production. Also behind in motor vehicle, our REA tax, but we are actually improving in our school land earnings and county four-mil tax. If you look at the next page, you'll see that graphically, our revenue to expense. And then on the third page, you'll see the comparison of charts. And so if you look year-to-date from our revenue, we've seen a decrease of $203,401.90, and our expenses have increased $691,775. If you'll go back to the agenda item, I've got three different links to attachments there. I'll open up that first one. This is our general fund. And so this is our monthly finance report, or what I track on a monthly basis. You can see when you look down through these, these are done by object, and so it tracks our revenue. You can see what our possible revenue, which is a projection, and you can see the revenue that we've actually collected. Out to the side in column I, that is the percentage of our estimate of needs that we've collected. Okay, so when you go down, again, I've showed you this before, if you go down to 3110 gross production, you can see that we've just collected 36% of our estimate needs. So we're not going to collect what our estimate of needs is. But when I did our projections, I didn't project that as part of our budget anyway because we didn't anticipate we would. Okay? I did 50%. I believe they used 90. I also went lower on our state school land earnings and our vehicle tax. If you look at the second tab at the bottom of that page, that is going to be our expenses. So track these on a monthly basis, kind of get an idea also of where our major increases. And you can see we've got a $200,000 increase from last year to this year in payroll. Okay? Part of that's going to be our pay raise. We have not necessarily added new employees. That's our support staff pay raise and certified staff pay raise. Okay, so you can look through that one. We also have the building fund, and so that's also linked there. You can see that our building fund is collected strongly. We're going to have a strong fund balance that we're projecting right now to allow the board to be able to do some, potentially do some projects. But remember, we talked about also the importance of Woods County's lower revenue adding, moving more expenses over to your building fund in the future. If you look at the bottom tab of that, you can also see the expenditure budget and a comparison of it from year-to-date and also what our estimates are. And then finally, the last link there is the child nutrition fund. And that is all the same. You'll see our revenue budget and our expenditure budget, and we anticipate having a healthy carryover in it also. Any questions?
About this one?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like we'll be like 1.2 million, since this is half a year.
Yeah.
But it looks to me like you've done a great job of lowering your expenses easily to lower expenses on our budget.
So one of the things you'll notice, and let me open that up, I can kind of show you here. So when you look at this, this is just part of the picture, your chargeables, because you're going to, because this won't match your revenue all the time because you're going to get state aid and federal aid. So when you see that gap either be closer or wider in comparison to expenses, this doesn't take into account revenue from the state or federal that allows us to help make up some of that loss. Now, it doesn't completely help us make up that loss, but it does help us in some areas, especially with some of our salaries and federal programs.
It won't put us on the force?
We are off the top half. We're on the bottom half of the market, and I don't anticipate we'll go back on the front half. Okay.
Good information. Thank you for your input.
Any other questions before I move on? That's a good question. Any other questions about that? Okay, extra duty assignments. Thank you, Ms. Kane and Mr. Hanson, for meeting this week. We have a couple of additional extra duty assignments for this spring. If you look on page two, we have Morgan Cook. He will be helping with assistant baseball. And Darian Forrell, she will be helping with assistant soccer for boys and girls. And then we have another change with our esports. Ms. Tyree, want to recognize Ms. Tyree in all of the work she's done with our esports. I think Dr. Nicewater would echo the amount of time she's spent. Our kids are really involved in that. I think we've had events or matches every day this week and maybe every day last week. And so it's a really great thing she's doing. And so that was 750, but she's doing that by herself, and so it was 750 for two people. And so we felt like it was appropriate for her to receive the full stipend of 1,500. So we really want to thank her and appreciate her time spent, and we know that's just a small part of it, but we appreciate her work. And then finally, Zeph Warren is going to be assistant high school baseball coach in spring, and I believe Zeph also has his CDL. Or in the process of getting that. So appreciate Zeph's work and help with that.
Mrs. Tyree, since, kudos to her. She took her aerospace group to dance. Maybe they've done that before. I don't know.
We did it last year.
It was phenomenal. It was a great feedback.
She does a great job.
Lots of neat things happened.
Okay, 3.5, we have our activity fund report. You can see our summary for the year, the top attachment, and then our bottom attachment is the revenue and summary for January. All of our activity funds are in good standing. Appreciate Ms. Hall's work with all of our activity people to make sure those accounts are in good standing. Agenda item 3.6, we have some fundraisers that we're going to bring to you tonight. And we normally don't like to do this, but in our change from Mrs. Durkey to Ms. Hall, when we switched over those emails, some of those didn't get submitted over. And so I'll take responsibility for that. You can see we submit them electronically, and so that changeover, they didn't get submitted to the right email. And so got a couple here for you for your approval. We have a first one there. You'll see student council. We have the vice president for Oklahoma Student Council, and there are some additional expenses that are associated with that. And so they are going to be selling some island cookies, shirt sales, and donations. If you look at agenda item, or excuse me, the second page of that attachment, we have some library, a library fundraiser. She's going to do an interview workshop here at the high school library. The third page, Mrs. Barrot did the old elementary school shirts, which were really, really neat. She's going to do a middle school shirt fundraiser. And then the fourth page, middle school's going to sell magnets. You see it says AMS PBIS, so this helps them purchase, whether it's a show pass or whatever it may be, to be able to go out and purchase those items for their students. And then page five, this is one of those that got lost in the transition. This is Abba High School Band, the Impact Catalog fundraiser. Mr. Stewart submitted this on time back when he was supposed to. Like I said, so this is my fault here on that. And then finally, this is a new one. We get the opportunity to host an elementary honor band at the middle school. We think that'll be a great opportunity to showcase our band and our facility, and so they will be selling concession at that elementary honor band. Any questions about fundraisers? Okay, we do not have any interaccount transfers this month. Agenda item 3.8, we have the child nutrition report. I've attached the kind of our year-to-date bills that we've served. You can see that we were up from the month of December, and I remember that's a shorter month in December, but relatively the same as our other months. And when you look comparison to other years, relatively the same as far as our lunch and breakfasts. Okay? And then agenda item 3.9, we do not have any items of surplus. Are any questions with regard to consent agenda? There are none, I would recommend it's approval.
Make a motion, we, that 3.1 to 3.9 is presented?
A second.
Hingleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number four, voter for your purchase order differences for the following funds for fiscal year 2024. 4.1, general fund as referenced, 4.2, building fund as referenced, and 4.3, gift fund as referenced.
Okay, we'll start first with agenda item 4.1. If you'll open up the top attachment, you will see our general fund expenses for the month. Purchase order number 396, CDWG, 2,345 is direct printing software. Purchase order number 397, peak uptime, that is our firewall licensing that we pay. A portion of that will be paid through E-Rate, and that's $14,734.52. Purchase order number 403, you'll see our farm plan and district fuel, $30,000. We had an original open purchase order to start the year for $47,000, and we have already used that money up with our student activities and travel. So we are going to open up another purchase order for $30,000. Purchase order number 405, Follette School Solutions. Believe we had a school last month that also purchased library books. This is required to be spent by the school. Purchase order number 408, 2,503 art supplies from high school through Evan Ceramic. And then purchase order number, yeah?
That's 407 on mine. Thank you.
Yes, you're right. That's just a typo on my notes. Yes, you're right. Thank you. Oh, yes. Purchase order number KNS Tire 409. 409, we purchased two new tires for our activity bus, and those were 2,503. If you will look at the second attachment, general fund payroll, those are all substitutes, and then we will be bringing a new hire later in the board meeting as a paraprofession. Any questions with 4.1? Agenda item 4.2, the building fund. You'll open that attachment. We have three purchases out of there. We have purchase order number 56, Cray Dog Mechanical HVAC unit replacement, $8,300. One of our middle school classrooms. Purchase order number 57, access elevator and lifts. That was repaired to lifts at the cafeteria and to the high school office, downstairs office. That was $5,000. And then purchase order number 58, Waller Class Company. That was to repair a window that met a basketball. So we've got that taken care of.
That must have been a large window.
It's the biggest window at the end of the hall.
Of course, that's the one that.
We've got video footage if you want to see it.
Agenda item 4.3, our gift fund. This is in relation to Alva State Bank and their gift to our arts programs. And so these are a couple of items from Mr. Stewart's portion. And so they're going to purchase a band trailer to help with hauling equipment for $6,220, and then also a cart for percussion. So those are two items that he is purchasing.
Do they have trail management?
No. What do you do? Are they going to be the captain's horse? I think so. Yeah, I think so.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah. Any questions about agenda item 4.1, 4.2, 4.3? There are none, I would recommend approval of those. I believe that we approve of this 4.1, 4.2, or 4.3.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Hingleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
So we're good with the fourth.
Okay, got a couple of resignations. First, we'll start with the first attachment. We have resignation from Effron Barazza for assistant baseball coach. And so appreciate Effron's work, but just going to work out with his, with his job at Bill Johnson. The next resignation we have is from Mrs. Rogo. Mrs. Rogo is a fifth grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary, and she will be resigning at the end of the year. We really appreciate Mrs. Rogo. She's done a good job and been a good teacher. And then the last one we have there is from Lori Snow. That would be Lori Mintbuster. Play for that. So 24 years as a pre-K aide, and she is going to be retiring, and so really appreciate her dedication to the district. She's done a really good job, and so we're very thankful for her, and she will be difficult to replace. Very good employee. So my communications, agenda item 5.2, really just want to remind all of you that this has been the first day of the legislative session. Just to give you some statistics on legislation, there are over 2,000 bills have been filed in the House and Senate. 300 of those could potentially impact schools. And so we'll be really mindful of those, of that legislation, and be aware of that to be able to talk to our representatives and our senators with regard to those bills that potentially could impact public schools. Agenda item 5.3, strategic plan. Tonight, we will have Dr. Nicewater presenting on our personnel goal area. So Dr. Nicewater.
My goal area is personnel. It is a pretty busy little committee. Let Van over here get set up. So here at the high school, we are working on engagement strategies in the classroom. We're doing this through our ICLE, which is the International Center for Learning and or Leadership in Education. And our trainer is coming to meet with our ELA teachers and our math teachers. She was here to meet with both sets of teachers twice this past month, and she has a virtual day set up to meet with them on our early release day. So that has been really great work. ELA had a little bit of a leg up. They had some work that had been done in prior years, and so they were able to kind of get a jump start of where they may have been if they started from ground zero. Math has a little bit more that they're catching up with, but they're doing a great job and working really hard to do so. So we're also doing a book study of Teach Like a Pirate, and it's been a really fun book to read together. It uses an acronym of pirate as, you know, methods of connecting with your students and engagement strategies. The next section that we are starting, that we started this past Friday, was the section on classroom strategies and how you can engage your students, different hooks, different methods. And so it's a lot of fun. So I'm looking forward to this discussion, and the teachers have been really awesome. So that's been a lot of fun. At the middle school, they have been working on technology training, which has been really successful for them, and as well as implementing PLC time, professional learning communities with professional development in their, in terms of their staff. They have the norms all set, and your norms are what the expectations are of the group. You know, we will start and end on time. We will bring our data that we need to discuss. We will come prepared and that kind of thing. So they have all their norms and their protocols set for the PLCs and have gotten a really good start with those and are very successful in that. K-20 has come and provided professional development. We met, the high school and the middle school met together with a K-20 center when we first came back, looking at PLC strategies and how to get those PLCs implemented. And it sounds like, well, that ought to be easy stuff to sit down and just start discussing things, but we're talking about teaching and teaching success. So we're going to talk about how my students did compared to how your students did, and if your students did better, then now I'm feeling a little uneasy, and maybe I don't really want to talk about this with you because I don't feel like as comparable a teacher as you. We have to create these safe spaces and this area of trust, and it's kind of a lot more challenging than it sounds because you're bearing your soul, you're bearing your heart. When your kids aren't as successful as you would like them to be and they would, they need to be, well, it comes back on your teaching. And so it's really, it makes a teacher very vulnerable to share all of that. So we had some great discussion with our K-20 center presenters, and I'm, you know, I think a lot of them because they are all educators, and so they have great things to share. So it was a good time together. Lincoln has been working with their PLC time, creating some intervention groups through their maps data. Whenever you do those maps testing on a regular basis, you pull that data, you break it down and look who needs what, how can we share our children, and how can we share intervention strategies across the grade levels. And so that's some really great time for them. They've been focusing on power-up math groups, as well as they've been working on collaborative use of their STEM lab equipment. You know, reminder, they received a grant from OETT, which is $60,000. It is $40,000 worth of technology and $25,000 worth of professional development. So that's a lot of what that PD is focusing on, student-centered learning and implementing that technology in the classroom. So they met with the OETT team on January 24th and worked through some of those strategies and just really laid some great groundwork. Longfellow, again, working in PLCs, focusing on that time that they're able to meet each Tuesday with the staff across the grade level. And that is a huge thing to be able to have that common time together so that you can get an entire grade level together. It's not as easy as it sounds. Schedules are a crazy thing to put together. There are a lot of moving parts and a lot of pieces. And so Longfellow was able to create common planned times and able to have that every Tuesday, which is fabulous. Their early release time in September, they looked at the TLE rubric and the different indicators within that rubric and how they can increase teacher knowledge of that evaluation piece so that they are more prepared. Washington has done a little bit of the same. They looked at individual indicators with their first early release date and looking at their observations and those conferences, and really are focusing on how that can increase student learning and how teacher engagement, teacher evaluation can really increase that student engagement. They're working on their PLC times. They have it set up to where each grade level meets at a different time, so Mrs. Williams is able to meet with those different grade levels, which is really valuable time as a principal, because then you can hear the discussion within the grade level and what those teachers need and what can we as principals do to help support our teachers. Because, you know, sometimes there might be a little bit of something that maybe they didn't know they could ask for or didn't know existed, and if a principal's sitting in the room, then they're able to say, oh, yeah, we can help you fix that. We can help you with that. And so that has been great. Been using guiding questions and topics to guide that PLC time and keep it on track, which is again, part of those norms and protocols. Looking at the data, making sure that what they're teaching, that the students are learning, and that make sure that we go back in, remediate, and help with interventions to ensure that students are learning and are making progress. We're going to talk with Vanna later about how to run the technology. So roadblocks that we have had within the implementation, you know, probably this last little bit, the biggest roadblock has been illness. You know, not only kids being out sick, so then you have to make up all that work, but teachers being out sick. And as we've discovered at the high school, substitutes being out sick. And so that has been a real challenge, and you think you have your classes all covered, and then you have three subs calling because they're sick too. And so that makes it a little trickier. So that's been a little bit of a roadblock, but we're getting there, and no big deal. We are pressing on. Time and scheduling is always a challenge. There's a finite amount of time and an infinite number of things that need to be done, so we have to make sure that we're doing our very best to use our time wisely and schedule that. So what are we doing to overcome our roadblocks? We are making sure that we are creating environments that are welcoming for our subs, and we're getting them the things that they need to help them be successful, continuing to support our teachers through the TLE process, and we are taking our vitamins because that is the key to it. Last week, we had a basketball game out of town, and Chesney messaged and said, hey, six out of seven cheerleaders that are supposed to travel today are now sick. By Wednesday, we were at 10 out of 14 of the entire squad. And so it has been a little bit of a challenge to keep everybody healthy, so we are encouraging everyone to take their vitamins. So next steps, we're working on- We're working on addressing professional development needs of the staff, making sure that we are hitting the goals that we have as a district, providing welcoming environments, scheduling PLC times and agendas with our guiding questions. We'll be attending, principals will be attending the career fair at Northwestern in March so that we make sure that we are getting to know those, those teachers who are graduating. We attended it at the December, I think it was November or December. They're right, right before graduation. And so we were getting our, our name in front of those teachers who are graduating. And some of them we have snagged as substitutes, so that's been really great. Get them in our building, get them to know us and know that they want to come teach for us. Continuing to support our teachers through the, the TLE evaluation process. And the PD committee and building principals met, I think that was last week, two weeks ago, to discuss our, our plan for the coming year to make sure that our professional development is set up like it needs to be so that we are, are meeting those needs. And that is all.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Nissenberg. Any questions for our principals or Dr. Nissenberg?
Neither. So check your vitamins, get today's. Wash your hands. Wash your hands. They drink food.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks all of you. It's good.
Current business. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to advocate number one, non-servant physician for the remainder of the 22nd of the fourth school year.
So this agenda item pertains to paraprofessional. We have a need at Washington Early Childhood for a paraprofessional with a student, and so Mark Kay Barton is going to fill that need for us through the remainder of the school year. And so I would recommend her employment.
So move.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a supplemental appropriation for fund number 81 gift fund for fiscal year 24.
So this supplemental appropriation, we did this last year also when we received the Alba State Bank Fund, or excuse me, donation last year. So we make this appropriation again this year. And then with your approval, it allows band, art, and vocal to spend that $50,000 from this year's. So move. Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a $10,000 anonymous donation to the Alba High School Speech and Debate Academy.
So Mr. Broad has been awarded this multiple times, and we really appreciate the donor that continues to support that program. And so per our policy, this somehow requires board approval. So I would recommend approval of this $10,000 donation to the High School Speech Department.
I move for recommendation of the $10,000 donation to the High School Speech Department.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Well, bless. It was, you know, having idea how much money was raised for the rings? It was rings, money raised for the state rings? Does that run through these?
I've nothing to add to that.
Does it run through here?
Yeah, it comes into the activity fund. I saw some of those checks, but I'm not sure. Couldn't find out.
There was a effort to raise money for the speech for the One Act kids. So I heard there was, it was very successful. Just goes to show again how wonderful it is. All right, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a contract with Corbin, Corbin Mertz, Haney, Norman. Hello. You know who they are. And interior design for Alba School's interior renovation projects.
So we, we brought a architectural contract with him previously for the entrance improvements, but we want to make sure that he produces enough transparency so that you know exactly what our meetings have been. And Mr. Hanson was at our, our previous meeting when we met with him. And so you can see the projects listed there from assessing Lincoln Elementary structurally. And there'll be another attachment to this to look at, to assess it. Not only, we've done some structural where we know the floor is an issue, but now looking at it mechanically and the electrical components of it. If you look at Project B, and that is Washington Elementary, and what it would look like to add classrooms there if it's deemed Lincoln is unable to be a viable place for our, our students. If you look at Project C, that's along the same lines. Can we add classrooms there? Project D, that pertains to the Quinn Trust and the Quinn Trust budget for building some kind of indoor golf simulator practice facility, which we received approval of that budget. So we'll be meeting with that committee and then bringing that back to the board hopefully next month. And then Project E, when we met with our stakeholder committees, our stakeholders talked about moving the high school office area up to this lounge area and the superintendent's office moving up to the high school. And so look at what that would look like and would that be a viable solution. Of course, all of these are ideas that we want them to begin working on. So before I ask, to look at the second attachment. I wanted to attach that on there because, I wanted to attach that because this is going to be the assessment that's done. It said in that architectural contract, mechanical and electrical assessment. And so our architects are going to work with this, this firm to conduct that assessment. And so they're going to go and look at mechanical and the electrical items throughout Lincoln.
And when was Lincoln built again? Was it 60s, wasn't it?
Yeah, it 50, it was 50 years in 2007. So roughly.
There's going to be a lot of electrical. Coats and change for medical system.
I have a question.
Sure.
This doesn't result in any amount of money yet, right?
So if, so the assessment?
There's some dollar amounts there. Has anything been accrued yet against this contract? Are there some hourly wages, for example?
So when they went and did our assessment of the floor, we paid for that. When they do this mechanical assessment, it'll be approximately 5,000. So just doing the assessments and those things are what we're paying for.
Okay. And some of that has already been accomplished?
So the floor has been looked at. The patio, I believe they went up to the patio and assessed the patio a couple of times to look at that structure.
Yeah.
So that part has been done. The only thing that hasn't been is this mechanical part.
Okay. Now, just so I understand. I'll pick it up. I looked at it once, but I didn't look at it very well, and I forgive me. So what are we agreeing to for that part? What's the cost of it? Is it open-ended? So much per hour?
5,000.
Yeah, it's the not-to exceed 5,000.
Not-to exceed 5,000, okay. So we've had, it's three fives or all of its fives?
No, 5,000 for mechanical and electrical assessment.
Okay, period. Okay.
Now, I can't tell you what, I can't remember off the top of my head what we paid for the, and you all may remember what we paid for the library. We've already encumbered it and, and paid them. I, I can't remember what that was.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding exactly.
They did a very thorough investigation in that one. I mean, it was.
They're, they're good.
Any other questions? Veronica and I would recommend approval of this contract with Corbin Mertz.
Do you guys all understand that? Okay. I'm the one.
No.
Okay. Your question clarified my question, so thank you. I was just making sure. I make a motion that we approve the contract with Corbin Mertz, Haney, Architectural Interior Design for exterior renovation projects.
I second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item 6.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following out-of-state travel requests.
Okay, so we have two out-of-state travel requests. Our first, 6.5.1, our judging team traveling to Canyon, Texas for a competition on March 22nd. And then 6.5.2, our tracking field team traveling to Craydog City, Kansas on March 28th. Both good opportunities for our young people. I would recommend approval of these out-of-state travel requests.
I move that these two out-of-state travel requests be approved.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item 7.1.
There are none.
Consideration of vote to enter into executive session to discuss deployment of the new superintendent of schools. 25 Oklahoma State statutes, section 307B1. So move.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.